Okay. Item number one was called to order. Let's get some order. I would like to welcome, I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of September 15th, 2025 to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Mikulak, councillor and chair of the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the Legislative Committee Coordinator. Once you evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure your cellphone is on silent or turned off. And lastly, the Town of Lincoln Committee of the Whole Meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button on the bottom right of the video. Item number two, roll call. Members of committee are all in attendance. We have staff in attendance also, in person and remote. Item three, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest tonight? Seeing none, we move on to item four, confirmation of agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? Looks good. Item number five, statutory public meetings. We have no statutory public meetings this evening. Item six, consent agenda. We are now considering the consent agenda inclusive of age-friendly and active community service advisory committee minutes of June 5th, 2025, museum advisory committee minutes of June 19th, 2025, and joint fire services advisory committee minutes of August 13th, 2025. Would any member of committee like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? Seeing no one. There being no discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Pachariva that all items listed under the heading of Consent Agenda for Monday, September 15th, 2025 be adopted as recommended. Age-friendly and active community advisory committee minutes of June 5th, 2025, museum advisory committee minutes of June 19th, 2025, and joint fire services advisory committee minutes of August 13th, 2025. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open up the vote.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is now open. And the vote is closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Item number seven, Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. We will now begin the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. 7.1, delegations. We have no delegations for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. Item 7.2, reports. We will now consider item 7.2.1, Report PW09-25, Electric Vehicle Chargers Operational Plan Improvements. Do members of committee have any questions relating to this report? We're considering the electric vehicle chargers, the operational plan improvements, 7.2.1.09, Report PW09-24. Okay, councillor Brune, go ahead.
Thank you much, thank you very much, Chair. So I actually have a number of questions. Not sure if our manager of bylaw is here this evening.
Um, I don't believe so. No, my apologies. Is there a question you can, we can pass to Walter Newbauer?
Sure. Just let me get the, from the report here.
Okay, councillor, do you have a question?
I do, I'm just trying to pull it up from the report here.
Okay.
I wasn't actually ready to go, but I see no one else in the queue, so I didn't want to let this opportunity go by. It speaks, Chair, it speaks to the wording in the bylaw where it basically says, you know, if someone were to park illegally in an EV designated spot, you know, it uses wording like maybe or can be. I don't, I don't quite understand that. Like, this is a pilot project that we launched quite a while ago. They've been, they've been out there. You know, I don't know, I don't know what we're achieving when we talk and use the words can be and maybe. Like, if someone is parked illegally in a designated parking spot that's supposed to be for EV, I don't understand why we're talking about warnings or education. So I just, my question would be to the director of bylaw, the wording that's used in our current bylaw that's in the report, when they're using words of can be and maybe, I think those words, that should be changed to will be and shall be, because I believe it's clearly marked that this is a parking spot for EV vehicles, so if someone is in there, they're illegally parked.
Thank you very much, councillor Brune. I'm sure that our CAO will take that under advisement and take note and pass those comments on to, falls within the same department, the planning and bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair, maybe just to make some, some brief comments, I can definitely take that back and have those types of conversations. I know often when we're looking at infractions like that, we do start with warnings and education, and then we can move to ticketing, fines, and towing, but I can have a further conversation with director Brewder and manager Barkway as well and get back to members of council.
Councillor?
That's great, thank you, Chair. If I could follow up with a second question? So through you to maybe Walter Newbauer or a member of staff, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the reasoning in why, the methodology in why we're dropping the price, I believe, that was $2.82, now down to $2.50. What are we, what are we trying to achieve? What is the operatus behind this decision? If you could just respond to that, I'd appreciate it.
Through you, Chair of the councillors, thank you for your question. Staff have taken a look at the operating costs for the program and have decided to reduce the, the program fees that we pay to charge point for warranty to go to just the basic package, so that reduced the overall operating expense. And so, since the fee per hour is a calculation, we reran the numbers and it adjusted it ever so slightly.
Councillor?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. And my third question, I'm just making sure that I understand what this report is telling us. I, I see the words in here that this has been a success, et cetera, et cetera, but the reality is we've spent approximately $307,000 to, to set up 21 charging stations. And so far, I believe from what I'm seeing in the report, and I stand to be corrected through you, Chair, to a member of staff, that so far we've got approximately $4,400 in revenue. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the wording in the fact that we think this is a success where we've invested $307,000. I see the words, you know, decade, over the next decade, we're hoping things were going to be improved, but I'm just trying to understand what this report is actually saying.
Through you, Chair of the councillor. I guess it's a matter of perspective. If you look at it simply from a cost recovery perspective, then yes, we didn't meet our targets. We wanted to be cost neutral on an annual basis, and we're looking at about 25% currently. We did receive a sponsorship grant through NPEI, so that was a success. I think from a success perspective, we, we've not ever had electric vehicle chargers within the community. We were issued a grant, they were installed as cost effectively as possible, they're operating efficiently. We've had some vandalism, but not a tremendous amount of vandalism. They're easy to operate, they're easy to maintain, people are using them, we're seeing that it's trending in an upward direction. Currently this year, we're at, you know, already 10% higher than the revenue generated last year. So staff feel it's, it's a success, green initiatives are part of our mandate, we're always trying to do things from a climate change perspective as well, and this provides much-needed infrastructure in the community. Could it be being utilized more often or by more people? Sure, and the hope is, is that over the next decade that'll happen, but at least the infrastructure and the operational plan are in place at this point.
Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that, that response, Mr. Newbauer. I just, you know, I've been, I've been waiting for this report, I've been asking our CAO for, for quite some time for this report, and, and quite honestly, I'm a little disappointed by this report. I was hoping that we were going to see some, some serious breakdowns of where, you know, site-specific, charger-specific for usage, so we could determine whether we actually have them in the right locations. I just don't understand really what this report is actually telling us after waiting this long, but, you know, I go on record as, as someone that did not believe that this was the right thing to do. I'm certainly not here to, to put up any roadblocks. I want this thing to, to be something that gets embraced, that doesn't cost our taxpayers any, any more money, and just was hoping that this report was going to be a little more fulsome, but thank you, Chair, appreciate the opportunity.
You're welcome. Moving along, we have councillor Pachariva.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, question to staff. Recently, they've installed a bank of these at the, I'm going to call it the gateway at Ontario and the South Service Road. Do we know what they charge, the cost of charging there at their Tesla chargers? Have we done any analysis on what the other machines are charging?
Looks like we have competition.
Through you, Chair to the councillor, I have not reached out to find out how much the Tesla units are charging. They are a different charging station, they're a Level 3 fast charger, more in line with, you know, people that are commuting, they drive up, they charge for 15 minutes, they leave, and their battery, I think, is at about 80% charged. So I believe the cost is significantly higher for that reason. The infrastructure costs to install those types of units are significantly different and significantly more costly, and not really in line with the use of our facilities, we're parking lots where we want people to stop, charge for a couple hours, spend their time in the community, and leave, whereas those types of units are much more of a commuter-based gas station-type operation.
Okay, thank you very much, that makes sense. And through you, Chair, one, just another, just like a follow-up question, because I don't, I don't know, I don't have an electric vehicle, so I don't, I don't know too much about them. I've, I've, you know, done a little bit of research, wanted to go down that route, pardon the pun, but with the lifestyle that I have, it doesn't really fit my, my driving pattern. But, so the Tesla machines, can you charge any vehicle there? And the same with ours, like, can you charge any electric vehicle at those? Like, I get that you're coming into town for a hockey tournament, and you're at the arena for a couple hours, so you, you plug it in and you charge up, and, you know, you're going to be around, so I get that, but how does, how does all that work?
Through you councillor to, through you, Chair to the councillor, I'm not overly familiar with the technology for the Level 3 stations. I believe they have a proprietary type hookup, so you need to have a special hookup or whatever it is that you call that, adapter. I believe ours are much more neutral, general, most people can, can use them.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Our CAO is going to chime in with firsthand experience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're right, I do have, or my family has firsthand experience. Tesla only charges Tesla as of right now. However, I have heard that they are looking at multi, that all charging facilities are going to be looking at possibly making it a universal adapter of sorts, for lack of a better word, but at this particular point in time, Tesla charges Tesla. If you're not a Tesla vehicle, you can't plug into a Tesla adapter.
Councillor? Good. All right. Next, we have councillor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to staff, probably to director Deanie. Just wondering if he has any insight into whether or not the new hotel that's being built is going to have public charging stations, and/or if there's any other businesses that may be contemplating adding on the same type of charging station that we offer.
Chair, through you to the councillor, I'm not 100% certain on the hotel, councillor, I don't know if they've fully mapped that out just yet, but I can definitely inquire. As to some other businesses, I've heard some rumblings that some might be doing it, for example, I think Bench Brewing, I don't know if they've moved forward with it just as of yet, but, but as of right now, I'm not too sure, but I'm happy to check and follow up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Mayor Easton, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So what I'm hearing is that we have an investment here, we have a response to the investment, and there's more information to come, no question about it. So I did the usual Google search, because I don't have an electric vehicle, but I did want to know what was being said about how popular they are, are there enough of them available to expose people to the use of them, and whether or not there's really enough EV models on the road to satisfy the pilot. So that question was not answered, but there is an increase in adoption. And one of the points that was made was that it does require an integration with daily life, which to me means that they've got to be easily accessible. They have to be where I need them, and I've, there's got to be enough of them that I can plug in when I need to plug in. But it's also tied to dynamic wireless systems, which I don't really think we have a lot of that, but if I'm driving along and I can use dynamic wireless charging, then I don't have to stop, and maybe that's something I purchase myself. The bottom line for me was, I read a lot of information, and this is not going to be streamlined anytime soon, hence I think the 10-year window. However, I do think that there's enough information out there that the staff could turn this from a pilot into something that's a little bit more progressive in the way we're questioning some of the, the information. To the point that was made by a couple of people, that we have more diversified locations, and we maybe have a, we have a program to encourage that. So if there's new businesses coming into town, maybe there's a way that we can encourage them to install one or two stations. Improved power is certainly a factor, and the management, the management of improved power is, is something that NPEI is looking at all the time. Wireless charging that's integrated with the electricity grid makes things much more convenient. So I'm not, we could change, we could make a motion, but I see that on page 26, that there is a steering committee, everybody has roles, and maybe what we need to do, and I think we've heard it tonight, let's put a little more pepper behind this so that we can start to see better justification for our investment. Yes, we agree that it's part of the green program, but we don't want to carry that burden too, too long. That's what my recommendation would be to the staff, and maybe the CAO has some comments about that. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just trying to understand exactly what are you hoping for the CAO and staff to work on?
Take the comments that were made tonight, the comments and questions that were made tonight, and have a discussion about how they can go about the continuation of this plan. I think that there's more money that needs, we need to find more money, what's the plan for that? Who, who's normally interested? If there's new businesses coming, are they interested in carrying some of that load? So that, what we should be doing is providing an introduction to this, to get people started down the road, not carrying the whole program, far from it. And so I would be very interested in hearing in two or three months' time what kind of, what discussion took place and what the staff have come up with in order to respond to the concerns that were raised tonight.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I'm sure our CAO and Mr. Newbauer are taking that under advisement. Councillor Brune?
Thank you, Chair. I just had one more question through you to Mr. Newbauer. Walter, I'm wondering if you could just kind of elaborate. I, I know in the report, it speaks about an annual repair and maintenance budget of $5,000. It also speaks to the fact that we've been experiencing, you know, some mischief, some, some damage, cutting of cables, just as an example. So I'm just trying to understand, because if it was in there, I missed it, like, what it, what an annual cost would be for what we're experiencing in terms of maintenance? You know, when I look at an annual repair and a maintenance budget of 5,000, it doesn't seem that much, but, but then I'm, I'm looking at the fact that we're having, we're having this stuff done, so just wondering if you could let me understand kind of the dynamics of, of all of that in terms of maintenance?
Through you, Chair of the councillor, the, the total budget is $11,000, $6,000 is for the software to run the program, for billing, response, technical support, those types of things. But the maintenance of the units, should they be vandalized or break, are no longer covered, so staff have decided to carry a $5,000 allowance for line painting, signage, anything that may come up. One of the things that was discussed, we, we recognize that maybe not all of the units are being used to their full potential, and so should we experience some major damage to one of these units? That would be quite costly, we would have a discussion internally and make the decision, does it make sense to fix it? Or, you know, does it make sense to only have one charger at that particular location, and hopefully that would up the usage in, in that location? So the total operational spend annually is $11,000, and again, we're looking for a cost-neutral approach where the town would cover that, and that's how the fees per, per hour have been derived.
Okay, I, I appreciate that response. I just, I ask it only because, you know, you know, we've got, we've got cameras that we've put up in, on many of our streets, and we know what's happening with those, they're being cut down as soon as they're installed. And now we've got the premier coming out and saying he wants to stop cameras. Well, I, I have a concern that we've got an investment here, and to the mayor's point, I don't want to run away from this program, but I think we need to, to decide how we can be successful with this, and I'm a little concerned that if all of a sudden someone starts coming around and cutting our, our cables on our EV, that all of a sudden, instead of 21, we're operating 10. So that's the only reason I asked that question, and I appreciate the response. Thank you very much.
Very good. I don't see any other questions, I don't see any other speakers, just, just to wrap it up, oh, sorry, director Deanie.
Sorry, Chair. Through you to councillor Russell with a previous question around some businesses. I actually opened up my, my app where I can look at chargers, so there are some businesses in there that do have some charging stations, most tend to be on, on the Tesla side, but there are a couple that, that have similar chargers to us.
Perfect. Okay, so wrapping up this item, this, you know, it's a, it's a challenging one, it's something new for the municipality to get into, we recognize that it may not be a home run at the first swing, but we're working on it to make it better, and it's appreciated the direction that we're taking, and it sounds like the course of action is the best it can be. We don't want to necessarily overspend on this if, if we're not sure exactly where the return on investment is heading, so we'll leave it up to the CAO and director, or Walter Newbauer, to move forward with this. There being no further discussion on this item, I have a motion moved by councillor Brune that committee receive and file for information, Report PW09-25, Electric Vehicle Chargers Operational Plan Improvements, and that committee recommend council approve an amendment to Schedule A of the Fees and Charges Bylaw 2024-85 to update the hourly rate to $2.50 tax-inclusive and include the $200 monthly sponsorship rate associated with electric vehicle charging. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open up the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And the vote is closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Perfect. As we have no further reports for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda, I will ask the Legislative Committee Coordinator to transition to our next committee agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be moving the gavel to councillor and Chair Diane Ranjima to assume the chair at this time for the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda.
Thank you, Chair Mikulak. We will now begin the General Business and Finance Agenda. We have no delegations this evening for the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda. Under Reports, we will now consider item 8.2.1, 2025, Second Quarter Operating and Capital Financial Report, FN0725. Do members of committee have any questions? Seeing none? I have a motion moved by councillor Russell that committee receive and file for information, FN0725, regarding the 2025 Second Quarter Operating and Capital Financial Reports, and approve the recommendations as presented in Appendix B. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is open. And the vote is closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider item 8.2.2, Report FN0825, Fleet Lease Versus Buy. Do members of committee have any questions? Councillor Mikulak, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you to Charlotte. Just in the report, just with respect to the current vehicles that we're leasing, they should be pretty much like new, they're only four years old. Do we know what the residual values are of those vehicles? Would it make sense to purchase them if they have a lifespan of 12 years? Would it, would it make sense to purchase them and then not necessarily worry about the mileage anymore, worry about, you know, the modifications, that sort of thing? I'm just talking from a personal strategy, how myself or my business would operate.
Through you, Chair, to the councillor. Well, I think there are basically two approaches. There is the approach to purchase, and then there's the approach to lease. In this particular case, we were under a lease piloting program, and we are recommending that as part of our capital financing strategy that we continue to pilot that program. So in, in that particular case, I would say it would be better using that residual value and investing it back into the leasing program as opposed to purchasing those outright and then having the ongoing maintenance costs, which we were trying to avoid with this strategy.
Okay, nice. Go ahead.
CAO, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Chair. I mean, I think the only other comment in looking at it, I think when you look at lease versus buy, and to the councillor's point, I think leasing transfers that risk sometimes associated with depreciation and resale, and the resale value to the lessor. associated with depreciation and resale, and the resale value to the lessor versus the less C. And so I think, you know, it's really a matter of how you're looking at it in terms of where you put that particular risk. Municipalities, if we purchase, are then tied to fluctuating market conditions and some of those potential losses, whether it be on disposal or purchase at the end of it. So it is one of those things I think, you know, we balance and we wrestle with, but it's a good point, Counselor, in terms of, I think, how you're looking at it. But again, it's really a risk management exercise.
Okay, appreciate that. It's just, yeah, like typically leased vehicles are driven by professionals, executives, and I'm not saying the people that are driving these vehicles are not professionals or executives. If they're 18-year-old summer students, that would, you know, concern me a little bit, but typically these leased vehicles have to be returned in, you know, pretty as-new condition with a little bit of wear and tear. But that's why I think sometimes it makes sense to purchase when all the depreciation has been paid for by the first, you know, by the first user. So that's why I bring that up. And a second question through you, with respect to maintenance, and again, I'm just a regular guy that buys new cars and, you know, drives old ones, too. I'm trying to understand how, and this is hopefully not getting into the weeds, but when you buy a new vehicle that you're leasing, how do you spend $500 a year in maintenance or $2,500 a year in maintenance on a new vehicle? I thought that's why you buy a new vehicle, to not have to pay that sort of, especially when we have our own mechanics on staff. We're not paying for oil changes necessarily. I mean, we're buying the oil and the filter, but what are we doing for $500 or $2,500 on a two-year-old, three-year-old vehicle that's under warranty?
Is that question for you, Charlotte? Are you prepared to answer that question?
Through you, Chair. Yes, I'll start, and then if the Director of Public Works has anything else he wants to add, he can add in. But I did just want to make sure that I emphasize that from a financial standpoint, these are the assumptions we use in order to estimate. So it was $500 in the first, a year in the first two years and $2,500 from years three to five. It could be a little higher, it could be a little lower. These were just estimates that were used in order to compare the costs of leasing versus the costs of buying and come up with the present value. So I guess I would acknowledge it's not a perfect estimate, but it would, you know, $500 is not a lot in the grand scheme of that net present value, and so it was enough in order to help us come up with those estimates. But I'll let the Director of Public Works share more detail than I certainly could about maintenance.
Thank you. Through Madam Chair to the Counselor. So Counselor, you're correct. I mean, we don't really have a lot of maintenance on these vehicles. You're typically looking at oil changes, maybe brakes towards the end, depending, fluid changes, that type of stuff. That would be the type of maintenance that we would be looking at on these types of vehicles. Otherwise, most of it would be covered by warranty through the manufacturer still. So it's really just oil changes, other fluid changes.
Yeah.
Brakes, like I say, towards the three-year mark, perhaps, depending on the kilometers.
No, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that, like, when we're presented with these numbers, that there is accurate as possible to make an informed decision, especially when the average person doesn't even know themselves whether they should be leasing or buying or financing or all sorts of different options. I just, again, it's just, I'm not here to tell the town how to run their, you know, fleet, but from my perspective and my 30 years of car ownership, it's usually better to own and not worry about it. But understanding, you know, finance and Charlotte's position or Charlotte's recommendation, I, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mickelik. Are there any other questions to the report? Okay, seeing none, I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote. Sorry, the motion is to that committee receive and file for information report F N 0825 regarding fleet lease versus buy.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And the vote has closed, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now consider Item 8.2.3 Report L S 0825 Regarding Accountability and Transparency Policy Update. Do members of committee have any questions? Okay, seeing none, there being no further discussion for this. Oh, Mayor Easton, go ahead. Yep.
Question this because the, because of the number of questions that have been asked both from the table and the public about how information is shared. And I want to make sure that I'm correct in that this policy was, this update, partially intended to answer that question. And so who is this? I have to look here and see who the staff member is that...
Probably send that question through to Devan.
Oh, okay. Devan's here. Okay. All right. So that would be my first question to Devan. What is the intention of this? Of this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, Chair Rejima. The intention behind this update to council is this policy is quite outdated. The last update it received was in 2015. Since then, legislation has changed and changed the lens for which municipalities have to provide public notice and remain accountable and transparent. So this policy intends to capture that, as well as the great work that we've done here at the town to adopt policies, such as the public notice policy earlier last year, just highlights that as well, as well as all of the supporting policies and framework that we work towards.
Okay, so this is like the overarching policy, and then we have a number of subsets which have been recently created or updated. Is that correct?
Through you, Chair to Madam Mayor. Yes, we are currently working our way through our policies and procedures here at the Town of Lincoln, bringing them forward as they come to fruition and approved by the corporate leadership team. So this policy does include some of those policies and procedures as well as legislation. It's not an extensive list. However, we do have other policies in place that may not have made it to this list quite yet.
Okay. All right. Just out of interest, the one that I remember the most clearly is the one that addressed how information would be shared through print media, through newspapers, for example. Does this policy cover that, or is that under another policy?
Through you, Chair to Madam Mayor. I believe you're referring to the public notice policy whereby we provide notice through our various media channels, newspapers, social media. This policy is an above addition to that public notice policy.
Okay. Second question, Madam Chair, is does this include any approach that we might take in collecting opinions or data where we're going to publish the results of that?
Through you, Chair to Madam Mayor. For clarification, are you referring to how we proceed to provide that notice?
Yes. For example, how would we, if we developed a questionnaire and put that out to the public and we were reporting on that, does this policy cover that?
Through you, Chair Rejima, through to Madam Mayor. So no, specifically, no, that does not outline specific details that we are going to get this questionnaire and provide those details in X format. However, the public notice policy does speak to that regard, as well as various legislation regarding the requirements. Staff are required to hear citizen engagement, but that's done through a different lens. And I'm just going to see if Town Clerk would like to add anything.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Devan. Through the Chair to the Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is mostly around the accountability and transparency. And so if you'll recall, this particular update is just updating the policy that's respecting the legislation that was supposed to move forward overarching the accountability and the integrity commissioners. As it's my understanding that that legislation or the bill has yet to be passed or received royal assent. So this is a very high-level policy. I think what you're getting at is, you know, surveys and such that are particularly attached to perhaps maybe a project or whatnot, and then those would be reported either through the communications channels or through the project itself to a report to council. So this is, really has to do with accountability and transparency in terms of how complaints are filed with the municipality or through an integrity commissioner, and therefore Devan has done a good job outlining the accompanying policies within that, well, lack of a better word, the policy. So you'll have how we, you know, really communicate through our procedural bylaw. You know, we have a listing in a central registration for conflict of interest, and we have that online. And so basically, it's a lot of information that we try to provide to the public and in a clear and accountable way. And if there's anything else that we can attach for public information, you know, that's something that we will endeavor to do. And, you know, we'll strive to do that through our data and updates that we'll provide online as much as possible.
Okay. Madam Chair, I just have another question. It has to do with whether or not we see ourselves setting standards around whether or not a questionnaire has merit or not, depending on how many people responded.
So you're speaking, sorry, through the Chair to the Mayor. So you're speaking in terms of like a survey that's gone out to residents and have responded. And so as I've always said to council, you know, it's hard to gauge the level engagement that we receive, but we endeavor to communicate as much as we possibly can, going above and beyond our notice policy for council in pertaining to any kind of topic, whether that be planning and development, or for instance, the budget survey. Those are just high-level examples that are coming to mind right now. And so, you know, if there's a way that we can do that through, you know, our notice policy that council has approved, you know, through our, every kind of communication channel that we can, you know, utilize to get the word out to the public, we endeavor to do so.
Okay. Well, Madam Chair, the, it never makes for a very comfortable position when you're challenged, but you don't necessarily, you haven't necessarily notified anyone about what you're looking for in terms of your standards. And so I'm going to just leave that on the table because I don't know where else to position that. But if we put out a questionnaire, and it's our questionnaire, and then we are questioning the validity of it, that's not a good position to be in. So I understand now that it's not this document.
No.
I leave it with you in terms of where it needs to fit in because I think we're, we're missing some opportunity, possibly.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and we'll definitely take that back with the communications team. I don't know if the C A O has anything else that he'd like to add, but definitely something that we can revisit with our notice policy. That was recently updated, and as you know, legislation has changed with regards to applicable notice under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and the province did dictate what that really means with local newsprint agencies that are going out of business. And what does a municipality really look to to get the word out to as many residents as possible? And that could be any number of things, you know, pertaining to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the questions, Mayor Easton. Are there any more questions to this report? Seeing none, there being no further discussion for this item, I have a motion moved by Counselor That committee receive and file for information report L S 0825 regarding the revised accountability and transparency policy update, and that committee approves the revised accountability and transparency policy as attached in Appendix A. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. Madam Mayor, may I have your vote, please? Affirmative. Affirmative in favor? Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I thought I, there we go.
Thank you. That vote is now closed, and that carries.
Thank you. We're now move on to Item 9 on the agenda, which is confidential items. We will now consider Agenda, Item 9, a motion to consider confidential items. Before I read the motion and we move into closed session, I would like to explain what will happen for those watching the meeting online. First, there will be a closed session statement that the Legislative Committee Coordinator will go through for staff that will be attending the closed session remotely. Once that is completed, we will move on with the motion to move into closed session. Staff will be turning off the live webcast during the closed portion of the meeting. Once we have completed the closed portion of the meeting, we will resume with the live webcast and carry on with the public portion of the meeting, and we'll read the motions in public session. I will now ask the Legislative Committee Coordinator to conduct the closed session statement for those attending the closed session remotely.
Thank you, Chair. All members are reminded that any discussions in closed session are to remain confidential as per our procedural bylaw and our code of conduct for the council of the Town of Lincoln. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following. That you understand that matters are to remain confidential, and confirm no one else is present with you, and confirm no one else can hear this closed session, and confirm that you're not using any electronic devices other than your tablet, computer, telephone for the video conferencing, and confirm that you are not recording this portion of the If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with "I understand and confirm" to all of the statements as I read your name aloud. Town Clerk, Director, Legislative Enterprise and Information Services, Julie Kirkalos.
I understand and confirm to all the statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion moved by Counselor Mickelik under Section 239 of the Municipal Act. Notice is hereby given that committee adjourned to closed session in order to address Item 9.1 as follows. Pursuant to Section 239, Bracket 2, Bracket B, personal matters about identifiable, identifiable individual, including municipal employees pertaining to the Niagara Region Public Transit Advisory Committee. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is open. Mayor Easton, may I have your vote? In favor? Thank you. And Counselor Brunet?
Support.
In favor? Thank you. And that vote is now closed, and that carries.
Thank you. Our Legislative Committee Coordinator will now proceed with the technical requirements to move into closed session.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Councilor Pachariva that committee receive and file the confidential update and that staff move forward as directed in closed session.
I'm sorry, we're on the motion to resume an open session. Thank you.
Good. Okay. I have a motion moved by Councilor Murray that that committee resume in open session.
Thank you Chair. That vote is now open. Mayor Easton, may I have your vote please? In favor, thank you. And that vote is now closed and it carries.
Thank you Deanna. I have a motion moved by Councilor Pachariva that committee receive and file the confidential update and that staff move forward as directed in closed session as it relates to item 9.1 pursuant to section 239 2B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees pertaining to the Niagara Transit Commission Public Advisory Committee. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you Chair. The vote is open. And Mayor Easton, your vote please? Affirmative, thank you. And that vote is now closed and it carries.
Thank you. Item number 10 on the agenda is committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks? Seeing none, there being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 6:27 PM.